I want to welcome you to tonight's Columbia Heights City Council meeting for Monday, September 23rd, 2019. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Biskin's here.
Councilmember Williams?
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Mershen?
Here.
Councilmember Nowitzki?
Here.
And Mayor Schmidt?
Here. Tonight's invocation is going to be provided by Pastor Bill Hugel from St. Matthew Lutheran.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Let us pray. Lord, you've given us a beautiful day. You've given us a beautiful place in which to live. We are blessed to be part of this community, and we pray that all of us, Lord, would be doing those things that allow us to be blessed in this place. And we ask your blessing, Lord, upon the women and men who are elected to serve our city. We pray that tonight, as they communicate, as they process, as they make decisions, we pray that you would bless them with wisdom, and knowledge, and compassion, and vision, and all that they need, that our city might continue to be a place where people live in justice, and in safety, and in freedom. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
If you are able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the mission statement. Our mission is to provide the highest quality public services. Services will be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner that effectively address changing citizen and community needs in a fiscally responsible manner. Item five is approval of the agenda. We have a couple additions to be added under item six, the Proclaimations Presentations. We're going to add item C, Plant Exchange and Fix-It Clinic. Amatha is here to give us an announcement about that. And then item D, we have our new fire chief, Thompson, here, and he's going to talk to us about the flag burning ceremony and the fire open house. So with those additions, if there are no others, can I get approval to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, thank you. So, moving on to the first proclamation, is the Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Presentation of Donation to the Recreation Department. And we have Becky, Clara, and Chris coming from the boosters.
Hello, thank you for having us today. My name is Clara Wolf. I am the current boosters president, and with me I have Chris Shanebauer, who's a board member, Becky Hanson, who's our treasurer, and I'm pretty sure everyone knows Keith.[215.12][215.12](laughter) I wanted to start out by reciting our mission statement, and our mission statement is to create an organization of community volunteers that will use all their talents and skills to raise money to support youth activities and athletics in Columbia Heights, so that all youth who wish to participate in activities will not be denied as a result of not having the means to do so. Through the boosters' continued partnership with the city and the Parks and Recs Department, we have been able to put our mission into action, and I wanted to thank you for your continued support of youth activities and athletics in Columbia Heights. And as a token of our appreciation, we have a check to present for $20,000.
Wow.[256.45][256.45](applause) Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's my honor to receive this donation from the Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Association, and with their generous support, we're able to provide great recreation programs to the community for a very affordable price when you compare with the neighboring communities. So again, thanks to the Columbia Heights boosters for all their support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clara, do you want to tell us how people can join the boosters?
Absolutely, I would love to. The third Wednesday of every month, we have monthly meetings, every month, it's monthly, downstairs at Mershen Hall in the senior room, and welcome to anyone who's over 18. We do a lot of our fundraising through charitable gambling, but there's a lot of other things we do to, we sell hot dogs, we raise other funds through Community Picnic, or selling 50/50 raffle, or we have an annual golf tournament. There's a lot of fun things to get involved with, so it's not just gambling. But yes, 7:00 PM, third Wednesday of every month at Mershen Hall.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What time was that?
Seven.
Seven, thank you. Did she say that?
Yes.
Okay, I missed it.
Next item is School District Update. Lauren Mueller is here to share with us. There's lots of things going on.[351.72][351.72](laughter)
Well, hi again, thanks for having me. I'm Lorian Mueller, your school board liaison to the City Council. As Mayor Schmidt said, there's lots going on, lots of activities. School is in full swing, a couple of weeks in. A couple of things we wanted to mention, so right now for all of our students and their parents, conferences are coming up already. So it's time for our fall conferences. So in each of our schools, we've got some conference dates coming up. I'm not going to read all of those. We also have a lot of sports teams. So with a district our size, it's great to have so many opportunities for our students to become engaged in athletics and activities. So a couple of our sports teams that we have, we have boys and girls soccer, girls swimming, girls tennis, volleyball, adapted soccer, bowling, and football are all going on right now. Lots of kids participating, so check out the website for the Athletics and Activities Calendar. Catch a game if you can, they'd love to have you. Next I do want to mention, the homecoming is coming up. So our homecoming game is October 11th, so Friday, October 11th is homecoming. That is the football game at 7:00 against Kennedy from Bloomington. There will be fireworks after the game, so just kind of watch for that. So for people knowing, wondering what's happening after the game, there will be a fireworks show after the game on Friday, and our high school students will participate in the homecoming dance on Saturday. Next also happening in October, annually, we have no school. There's a four-day weekend, so October 17th and 18th are, they used to call it MEA, or the Teacher Convention Break, so there'll be no school on those days. So lots of great weather, get out there and support our athletics and activities, and hopefully we'll see everybody at homecoming.
Okay, and then you do fireworks after every touchdown, too, correct?
Yes, thank you, yep. There's fireworks after a touchdown, so hopefully you'll hear a lot of fireworks on Friday, October 11th.[477.62][477.62](laughter) So yes, fireworks-
It's just Columbia Heights touchdowns.
Just Columbia Heights touchdowns. We don't celebrate their touchdowns, there won't be any. Columbia Heights touchdowns will be fireworks there, and then a fireworks display after the game, too.
Thank you. And I believe the boosters are doing something.
They usually do a tailgating beforehand.
Okay.
So if you haven't checked that out, I know I've been to quite a few of them, they're pretty fun, well-attended.
In the student parking lot across from the football stadium, I believe they start at 6:00. The boosters are there supporting and a tailgating, and sometimes the pet band comes over and gives a little show as well. So really a great opportunity to hang out with your neighbors and get to know everybody before you head over to the game. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Fix-It Clinic and Plant Exchange, and Amatha Simil is here to tell us about that.
Hello. I'd like to invite everyone in Columbia Heights and the surrounding areas to our Fall Plant Exchange. Coming up this Saturday, we meet at Lomiake Park, and it starts at 11:00 AM. We're going to have cider, coffee, and donuts, pastries. But it's very well-attended, it's free. Bring any plants you'd like, label them, and we just do a great exchange. And the next event is, the following Saturday is the Free Fix-It Clinic. This is our third Fall Free Fix-It Clinic. You can bring any small appliances, clothing that needs to be mended can be fixed, and it's all volunteer. So Heights Next organizes it, helps with volunteers, and all of the fixers are also volunteers in the whole county and the community areas. And yeah, so you can bring kind of any item down, you will fix it. You don't get to just drop it off and get it fixed. You actually get a screwdriver put in your hand, and some instruction on how to work on your lamp or your radio. But everyone goes away knowing a bit more about their own things and helps them to be more sustainable. We'd love to invite everyone.
And where is that one at?
Oh, and that one is at the Community United Methodist Church, in their church basement.
In time?
They lend us use of space. And that starts at 10:00 AM and goes till 1:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last item is Chief Thompson has a couple announcements for us.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I do have a couple announcements. Number one would be our Fire Department Open House. That'll take place this Saturday, September 28th, at the Fire Department, of course, 825-41st. Quite a few events planned for that day, so come on down, see the trucks, see the fire station, see how we operate, and ask some questions. Look forward to that event, 11 to 2:00 PM. The second item I'd like to announce is a flag burning event that'll take place October 5th, and that's at 10:00 AM at the VFW. Our Honor Guard, the Fire Department Honor Guard, does a formal presentation at the event, and they've done it for several years, I understand. Councilmember Mershen, you may want to comment on it if you wish, but we look forward to both events, and welcome anybody to them.
Thank you very much. Next item is our Consent Agenda. These items are considered to be routine by the City Council. Will be enacted as part of the Consent Agenda by one motion. Items removed from Consent Agenda approval will be taken up as a next order of business, and if there's no comments or questions regarding this. Kelly, could you go ahead then?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item number A is Approval of the City Council Meeting Minutes from September 9th, and City Council Work Session Minutes of September 3rd. Item B is Consideration of the Included Rental Housing License Applications. Item C is Approval of the Business License Agenda that was in your packet. And Item D is a Review of the Bills Totalling $949,495.41.
If there are no comments or corrections, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mershen, and second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right. Now, next item is our Public Hearings. First item is Consideration of Revocation of the License to Operate a Rental Unit Within the City of Columbia Heights Is Requested Against the Rental Property at 2103 Fairway Drive Northeast for Failure to Meet the Requirements of the Residential Maintenance Codes. And Dan, are you talking about this?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this property is basically up for revocation. There's a failure to submit their rental application, their fees, and correct the couple outstanding violations on the property. Multiple attempts to contact them, and haven't heard anything back, so.
Does anybody from the council have any questions regarding this property?
No.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so is there anybody from the audience that is here regarding, wishing to talk about 2103 Fairway Drive here? Anybody here want to, have any questions or comments regarding that one, 2103 Fairway Drive? All right. Then I need a motion to close the public hearing and to await the reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Thank you. And then move to adopt resolution?
Move to adopt resolution number 2019-73. Beant resolution of the City Council of the City of Columbia Heights approving revocation pursuant to City Code Chapter 5A, Article 4, Section 5A dot 408A of the rental license listed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, thank you. And then moving on to Item B is Establishment of Northeast Business Center TIF District. And Director Chirpik is here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Aaron Chirpik, Community Development Director. So the item that you have in front of you is repetitious of the EDA meeting that was just held, but for the sake of certainly residents and those watching at home, we'll go through the background and a bit of the history on how we got to this request. So the city's EDA recently purchased redevelopment site located at 3989 Central Avenue Northeast, and has secured a preferred development partner for the site in Alatus LLC. And as part of that project, Alatus has requested public financial assistance in the form of tax increment financing. There are several details that are still being discussed and reviewed regarding this assistance. Staff from Ellers, our public finance consultant, the developer as well, are all collaborating to finalize details. So at this time, we're looking at a plan that just establishes a broad parameters for the TIF District. Eligible improvements when considering what's eligible for TIF on this site, for reimbursement, acquisition of the land and buildings, any public improvements in the space, utilities, demolition and underground parking would all be eligible as TIF expenditures. Within the city, it is the EDA that has the authority to exercise TIF powers. However, it's required that the City Council authorize any new district as well, and that's what this public hearing is for. So previously, just a little bit of background about the district in general. The EDA and council had established redevelopment project that was designated as the Downtown Central Business District Revitalization Plan. That plan encourages development and redevelopment along the Central Avenue corridor, and actually that plan, if you will, covers the entire city. So anytime that we modify or create a new district, we have to go through this exercise, and that's how we would be creating the Northeast Business Center District within that broader plan. The plan that we're going to talk about tonight is merely a planning document that reflects the maximum potential of this proposed district, and it does not constitute any specific terms regarding length or dollar amount as part of this. That would be part of a separate development contract that would be executed at a later date, once the details of the project are finalized and secured through a contract for private redevelopment. The structure of the proposed TIF and the general outline were provided in the detailed TIF plan, but generally speaking, the project as it stands includes the development of approximately 266 luxury apartments, 3,500 square feet of retail, and 20,000 square feet of office space. The maximum duration for this district would be set at 26 years, and if it maxed out the annual estimated tax increment, would be just over $1 million. So just a little bit of housekeeping in general about TIF. So it's a public financial assistance method that's used, again, to offset qualified cost development by using a portion of future tax revenue that's generated from the development within this district. When a district is created, the current value of all taxable property within that district is frozen at its current base value, and over the lifespan of a TIF district, the county's city and school district still collect property taxes on that frozen base value. But as the development increases, the taxable property of the value in total, anything above that frozen value is what's called as increment, so the tax revenue generated above the base value. And that increment is what is used to reimburse the developer in this case for all of the qualified costs that we discussed earlier. So some of the findings, just briefly, when we create a TIF plan, we're checking some significant boxes. First, that it qualifies for redevelopment districts, so does the, do the properties in question meet the threshold as designated by state statutes, and they certainly have been found to. One of those is that at least 70% of the area of the parcels in the district are occupied by buildings, streets, utilities are their improvements. And then the other, perhaps more important for this project, would be that 50% of the buildings in the district are structurally deficient or substandard. And that analysis was completed by a third-party architectural and engineering firm on behalf of the city, and we have met those thresholds. And then more generally speaking, we need to find that this proposed development, in the opinion of the city, would not be reasonably expected to occur solely through private investment, and would meet the but-for threshold for the assistance. And then we do need to make sure that the plan does conform with the general development plan for the city, which in this case is our comprehensive plan. The recent update for this, for the city and the 2040 plan guides this property in question for transit-oriented development. The earmarks of TOD, or Transit Oriented Development, are all in alignment with what is being contemplated in this proposal, an emphasis on high-density residential, mixed-use projects, so retail, commercial, office, and a particular attention to pedestrian improvements and creating active spaces along Central Avenue. This project checks all of those boxes as it relates to comprehensive plan. So with that, the plan is what we're establishing, again, with this action, so no details, dollar amounts, just setting into motion the creation of a TIF District for this site with the maximized values for every component that's being contemplated. Once we determine the exact amount of units and square foot of office and retail, we'll hone in on what the length of the term is and the final amount of assistance needed. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and-
Does council have any questions or comments regarding this? This is strictly talking about the TIF District? No questions? Okay, then I, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody from the public that has any questions or comments regarding the TIF proposal here, please come forward. Anybody have any, anybody? Okay, and can I motion to close-
One back there.
Oh, one back there? Sorry. All right.
Pardon me. So it would actually, Shaun Broome, 4117 Fifth Street, Northeast. It would actually seem to belabor the point, though, that you all are about to vote on what would be a relatively substantial investment by the city in this TIF District, and there have been no public questions, and no public questions entertained about that TIF District up until this point, and that there have been very few in the way of public questions shown by you guys as you have analyzed this because of the fact that work sessions and EDA meetings are not videotaped and televised. So it's really hard to think that the public is informed about these decisions, and that's really unfortunate. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Tim Utes, 4141 Stinson Boulevard. He's had a question. At the Wednesday meeting that was presented that there's going to be a TIF District in conjunction with the city putting their city hall there, and on that chart, there was a credit from the developer for like $2 million or something like that for development. I just want to understand if the TIF, if the city doesn't invest in that, where does that, because my understanding was that $2 million or so was going to be credited for the parking ramp. And it's kind of like, there's two different things happening at the same time tonight, and I just want to clarify. Is that credit still going to be given back to the city? Is this developer going to purchase that ramp instead of giving us a credit for developing the first floor into city hall? Because my understanding is $2 million allotted as a credit in exchange for not purchasing the parking ramp if the city moved into that space. That's kind of what I just want to understand with the TIF part, with the TIF.
Can you answer that one, please?
I think that's a question that we could try and unpack in the subsequent conversation. So this action, we're requesting establishment of the TIF District for this property, which would include some of the project components that he is discussing, that we could, we could spend more time talking about how those pieces fit into TIF. To the other gentleman's point, so the acquisition of the building by the EDA in this case was predicated upon the assumption that a TIF District would be created. So going into that acquisition, all redevelopment proposals that the city knew were feasible for the site would require TIF. So that, that's the action right here tonight, is creating that district that allows for a number of different projects to materialize within it that we still have to debate and discuss. So I'd rather try to unpack some of what the second gentleman's questions were in the next item for discussion.
Correct. All right. Could you, well, since you're here, could you, we have two other TIF Districts that were approved in the last couple of years, the Central Value Center, and then the 47th and Grand. So we do have a history of, recent history of doing TIF. If, one was in 2017, the second was in 2018. There has been discussion, we've had new council members, new mayor, that have come on board since, and we, so there's been a lot of discussion. I know previous people working in the Planning Department gave us very detailed information on what a TIF District was, and it is very confusing at times, but for the most part, it has worked, and it has historically worked in this state and in this city for helping develop.
Right. So I think, yes, all of that is true. Certainly, we have a history of utilizing the tool as a necessity, as a fully developed community, especially in redevelopment districts where there's extraordinary costs. If you want to replace something that's old with something new, that elevates the gap in cases like this for us. We do have experience in utilizing other types of TIF districts, housing districts, that don't have the same redevelopment constraints that this one does. But we certainly have done recently large-scale redevelopment districts, like the Huseb Park redevelopment was fairly extensive and similar in many ways. Again, this is a maximum plan that includes components based upon what we think this project will look like. If any one of those components is extracted, the plan is still valid. If we go beyond some of the square footages or unit counts, for example, you would have to amend this plan. But the plan was created to create space for a variety of different outcomes as it relates to what actually gets built there. The only constant in this case in working with Alatus is certainly the apartment piece. That's what won't significantly change, depending on what the council decides about the placement of the city hall. In this case, that number could go up and down depending on that other decision. So again, the plan creates the room for all of that, and it can change within the plan.
And one other question to clarify, if the project does not get started within a certain amount of time, what happens to the TIF?
You would have to recertify the district, and perhaps Ellers could speak more intelligently to the exact timeline, but you, you do have to begin construction within a certain timeframe? Yeah?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Stacy Quilving with Ellers and Associates, your fiscal advisor on tax increment districts. Essentially, the question is, there's two things that happen when you create a TIF District. So after you have the public hearing tonight, that district is not created and established until we make the request for certification to the Office of the State Auditor. Typically, we do not do that until you have a development agreement or TIF agreement in place, because we don't want that clock to start ticking. Say you get to that actual point where we request the certification, within the first five years, you have to have that development underway and the expenditures fully funded. So that, that's the only time that you can do the development. As Erin had stated, if it doesn't happen within that first five years, then you would have to decertify and restart the district over. But again, we typically don't certify until we know we have a development agreement with a qualified developer.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Where am I at?
I'd like to clarify from what I've heard tonight, if we create a TIF, it's specifically for this developer, it lasts five years, and assuming everything goes correct, that's great. But the question I would have is if in two years, three years, the developer walks, goes bankrupt, or something like that happens, that property sits vacant, can't be developed by somebody else until that five-year period has lapsed. I just want to clarify that that's what we're, that's the case of the, the TIF can be canceled if the developer goes, walks away?
The TIF is specifically with the developer, correct?
Correct. But I'm asking about this, the risk that the city's involving with a specific developer, and that TIF is specific for that developer for five years, and it can't be broken. Is that my understanding?
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Essentially, what you're doing tonight is creating a TIF District. And as Erin had stated, essentially, you have a global end uses that can actually go in there because it's a maximum budget in end uses that we are doing. What we all know is that we are going down a road with a preferred developer to complete a development that's mixed-use and vertical, which includes both rental property as well as potential office and some retail space. as potential office and some retail space. Now, the developer is not going to, well, I would never say not go bankrupt with regards to this, but essentially, once you enter into a contract with them, you are going to go into an obligation that's called a pay-as-you-go obligation. So it's a no-risk proposition for the city because as the project is actually developed and up and paying taxes, they're going to get a rebate of those taxes on a semi-annual basis over the time. So again, they're going out and fronting all the costs for this development, so it's a no-risk proposition for the city moving forward. So if in fact, you look to do a contract with them, you look to sell the property to them, you're not going to close on that property sale until you know he has his bank financing in place to actually construct the development. That's your protection that you have.
Thank you. Erin, could you verify one other comment, too? It is a very unique situation because there is the office building, and there's also the parking ramp that are proposed to be demolitioned. But, so in this case, it's unusual because the city owns the parking ramp, and at this point, we do not collect any property tax on that. So it's going to change our TIF. In, in most cases, the TIF would remain the same, but in this case, because the parking ramp is included, what we collect is going to be higher than what is collected right now.
Right. It is unique in that regard. You typically don't have that scenario where you have an exempt property. In this case, it's in the form of our municipally-owned parking ramp that would now be assigned a value by the county of about $2 million that's added to the base value of the building. Those two values combined become the frozen base value for the district. It's about $5 million. So you see that jump on the base value, which is a nice component of this project because of that unique nature. For the city, that means about $19,000 annually for our portion of tax revenue that would, would come to the general fund in this case as soon as the district was established and that base value was frozen. So.
All right. Thank you. Last hand, any other questions? All right. Then we have some motions, please.
So can you move to waive the reading? Am I on the right one?
Yes.
Let me check. Resolution 201974. I just want to make sure I'm on the right one.
Yes.
There being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then continue on.
Move to approve resolution number 201974, resolution adopting a modification to the downtown CBD re-violization, revitalization plan for the downtown central business district redevelopment project, establishing the Northeast Business Center Tax Increment Financing District therein, and adopting a tax increment financing plan therefore.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to items for consideration, we have one item under item C, new business and reports, authorizing the establishment of a new city hall as part of a vertical mixed-use development at 3986 Central Avenue. And Erin, can you get that again?
Yeah, we'll hang out, settle in for this one, I suppose. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Erin Chirpik, CD Director still. So the project that we're discussing next is in relation to the tax increment financing district that we just discussed, of course. There's a bit of background information that I think is required before we get into the deliberations, but as part of the same property at 3989 Central Avenue Northeast, a lattice, as we have indicated, has emerged as the city's preferred partner for the redevelopment of that site. Negotiations with their team started about a year ago, actually, and have evolved over the course of the better part of a year, and it was in spring where the EDA took a more active role in securing the future for that property by, of course, acquiring it, and then re-engaged a lattice along the way when it was clear that to facilitate the project, the EDA would have to, to step in and take site control. Again, the current project that's being contemplated by a lattice includes 266 luxury apartments, 3,500 square feet of retail, and 20,000 square feet of office space that's currently programmed for a potential city hall, but just a little more history. So after the selection of a lattice as our preferred partner, a lattice did approach city staff and the council to gauge interest in a partnership that would program the new city hall into the Central Avenue project. The initial concept layout that they provided has the new city hall occupying 20,000 square feet of office space on the first floor. In response to that inquiry by a lattice, staff was directed by the council to work with the lattice development team to further refine their plans so that a more fully developed concept could be vetted in the future. A lattice was directed by the council to prove a couple of things as part of that analysis. First, that the city could find a functional layout at that location and that that could be achieved in a cost-effective manner. So two primary goalposts were given for direction. So following that, staff did work with a lattice to create a workable footprint for the new city hall at the, the Central Avenue site. And once that base plate or space on the first floor was defined, staff did engage the services of Leo A. Daley to program a floor plan that was specific to that, that area, if you will. That analysis, or what Leo A. Daley used for guidance, was our previously completed space needs analysis for just a new city hall in general throughout the city. So we had programmed the different departments and the space that they would need, and then plugged those equations essentially into the Central Avenue site to make sure that we could fit there and find a way to function. When staff became comfortable with that initial fit plan, a budget was prepared for the project through collaboration with a lattice, Leo A. Daley, and Ellers. The refined plans and the budget were recently presented to the city council at an open house meeting held on September 18th. And at that meeting, the primary pros and cons of locating city hall at this site were discussed, and I'll just briefly go through some of those. Pros were identified as a significant cost savings, first and foremost. When compared to alternative standalone sites, about $5.5 million of savings can be realized over the next most viable option. Secondly, the money that is saved by co-locating can be used for other priorities in the city without having to bond. The Central Avenue location is a prominent and accessible location. It allows us to streamline municipal services, given proximity to the city's current library, drives pedestrian traffic and additional commercial investment along the corridor, and provides a stable anchor presence on Central Avenue. Predominant cons were listed as sharing space with other uses equates to less site control and joint decision-making for anything related to the facility moving forward. So to paraphrase, just kind of the unknowns of, of living with other uses in the same building. It certainly is not typical to what we currently have. City hall would occupy space that could be used for other commercial uses is a concern that has been identified. Untraditional location for city hall, and certainly limited room for future expansion at that location. In review of the fit plan and the preliminary budget and the pros and cons that have been identified by staff, our consultants, and members of the community, staff does believe that the city should move forward and partner with a lattice to locate a new city hall at this redevelopment site. For staff, the primary rationale for that decision relates to cost. Locating the city hall within the lattice development allows the city to save more than $5 million when compared to other options, and again, that money saved can be used for other priorities. Just a shortlist that's evolving, you know, continuously includes park improvements, renovations to Mergon Hall, and improvements to the Public Works Building, as well as alleyway reconstruction, and many others. Locating city hall with the lattice project also ensures that the city wouldn't have to borrow additional resources to fund this project or any of the other priorities that we're currently working on. So that's the framework for where we're at. I would anticipate that there are some questions, but staff are recommending that the council does identify the Central Avenue location as the preferred site for city hall. I would say that that decision, there's many things that are to be vetted after this, this evening's meeting. If anything falls apart or doesn't go the way the city is expecting, it's not a commitment in that regard, but shortly after selecting a site, we would move forward with, you know, more finite architectural designs for the interior of the building. From a lattice's perspective, they need the city to decide how we feel about this because they have a project either way, and, and they need to move that conversation forward so that we can complete the overall redevelopment. So I know we're asking a lot from a timeline perspective, but staff has brought it to the point where we feel that we're at that stepping off point and that there is enough information available to us to make an appropriate decision and move the project forward one way or another. So with that.
Thank you. City manager?
Yes.
Could you give us some more information? I know you've been talking, you, you helped set up the meeting on Wednesday, and there, there's been some changes. Originally, there was talk about adding on a second floor, but that's now strictly to first floor for city hall. And could you explain that and layout? I know everything is fluid, but.
It is. Sure, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Initially, when we started looking at a city hall, we were looking at about 17,500 square feet of space that did not incorporate any of our public works engineering staff. And moving forward and just analyzing the city hall and how we operate in general and the interactions that our public works staff, especially our engineering staff and our public works director have with our community development staff, with administration staff, finance, it made a lot of sense to move those staff folks over with a new city hall. So that square footage went from 17,500, which is what we originally had told a lattice that we needed, to about 20,000. And in working through iterations with Leo A. Daley, the architectural firm that we hired, as well as a lattice's architectural firm, initially, we did not think that we could get all 20,000, a little over actually, square feet on one floor. And so we did look at actually moving our IS staff up to the second floor of this mixed-use space. Not ideal from anybody's perspective. Right now, our IS staff is segregated quite a bit. If anyone has to be IS is probably the easiest because a lot of what they do is remote and they don't have a lot of interactions with other staff unless there's something that they're installing or something that, that goes wrong. Luckily, though, with the, the work between both of our architectural firms, we were able to fit all of that square footage on one floor within this building. So we're at about, I believe, 20,700 square feet on this site, and it does incorporate our IS staff on the same floor. I will say, just anecdotally, from my perspective, we've looked at a lot of different layouts, some of them not so great, and these are layouts that our firm, Leo A. Daley, put together for us. We went through a lot of iterations, and there were times when we looked at it and went, I don't know if this is going to work. I have to say this last iteration, it's not perfect. It will change. I guarantee you, it will still change. We've already been talking about that, but it really is an attractive facility. I think it's a very usable facility for our needs. I don't think it's the Taj Mahal. I know we've talked about that, but I think it's a really nice facility. I like where our council chambers and our community room are located, right next to Central Avenue. It opens up a lot of opportunity just for operational efficiencies for our internal operations. Right now, we're very segregated on two floors with community development and part of our finance department being on one and our admin staff and the rest of our finance department being on another. That makes for really inefficient use of staff. So this, this or the Mergon Hall site, which is the other option that's been looked at, really help with that part of it. Something that we don't have in here is a fitness area for staff, and that's the one thing that with the Mergon Hall site, we would add square footage for that if possible. It's certainly an option. It's not a necessity, but that is something we've looked at. We like the idea of having a cafe next door. I think that's really usable for, for our staff and for meetings. But just generally, it's, like I said, it's been through a lot of iterations. It's not done yet, but it's, it's actually to the point now where it's very exciting. And I know one of the other questions, and then I'll stop. We've talked about lack of expansion room, and something that I'm excited about, and I know our, our division heads are, is just how we do business will change. How we provide service in any new facility will change with technology upgrades, with just being able to, again, have all of our departments on one floor, all of our staff able to man one reception desk. That creates efficiencies that we're not able to, to assess right now. So then we look at staffing and when retirements happen and how we provide that service, it really changes. And I think with, with, given our location and the fact that we're a fully built-out suburb, we're not going to add 20,000 people. We will certainly add population and we'll change our population, but the need to expand or double our staffing certainly isn't there. So I think the way that this is designed, we have built in extra workstations, extra space for additional people based on what we've looked at from each, each department's needs, but I think it's very functional.
And I just wanted to confirm, there is no mayor's office.
No.
This is not, this is not going to be Delax's office. The only reason I have a mayor's office at this place is because there's so much extra space. Typically, cities this size, the, the mayor does not have an office at city hall. This is very unusual. I've been very grateful to staff for having one because it does get me out of the house and then I can have a designated spot to meet people, but because of the innovations of the newer style office space, there will be meeting rooms that will be available, not just to myself, but to any of the council members to utilize at any time during the day. So it, it will not be the mayor's office, it will be the council's usable space, but then it also opens up to anybody else that needs to have meetings at that, at that point, too. So that being said, is there any other comments from staff? Did you have anything, too, you wanted to add? All right. Councilmembers, do you have anything, questions or comments you'd like to make?
I just, for me, this has been a real struggle.
Councilmember Biskin?
Yes, I'll talk. Thank you. Mayor Schmidt, it's been a real struggle since they started talking about where we're going to put our city hall. I preferred, and from the very beginning, to have our own standalone city hall. The city has never had a standalone city hall. We've had the fieldhouse, then we globbed pieces onto this building to become a city hall, and we did it just to get by. When they put this building together, when they put it in there, they weren't thinking 50 years down the road. And now we're stuck with a building that we have staff working in that shouldn't be working in this building. Personally, I don't believe staff should be in this building right now. And to get it repaired, even to bring it up, we've gone over this before, six and a half. So I've been going back and forth and talking to people in the community, giving them pros and cons, and I'm, I'm real concerned because I, I would love to have a standalone, but you know, the savings is very attractive for the new building. I just, I still haven't made up my mind, actually, to be honest with you. I guess we'll see what happens tonight because I'm real concerned. I don't want this to be, let's get by and do it on the cheap. Well, you know, the savings are great, but there are so many unknowns, even though we're going to have hopefully a very strong contract with the partner that we're going to be owning this building with. We're co-owning it, we're not going to lease it. I have concerns down the road. I'm, what is this going to look like 40, 50 years down the road? And that concerns me. I have, it's for like this one here, I have people just like he listed before, a lattice that wasn't brought up because this is in an opportunity zone that was set up by the federal government, has to own this building for 10 years. After that, they can sell it, and we have no control over who they sell it to. We have, we may not have a good working relationship with the new owner. We don't know who they are, and this has never been done. We've searched, staff searched all over the country. No other city has partnered with a private developer to build a library or a city hall. The ones that have occurred in Milwaukee and here in Maconia, and there's another city, I forget, they, they partnered with.
Victoria.
Victoria, and some other ones, they partnered, they've co-built a building together with an HRA, which is government, or a nonprofit. They've not done it with private. So in going into this, if we go with this, this, this site, it's, we're new. We're the ones people are going to be calling, asking how this is going to work. The other one that came about, people are really concerned, this is right in the smack-dab middle of our city. This is where people wanted life to begin again, to bring people out on the streets and pedestrians. However, I mean, tonight, I'm still getting information going back and forth. The mayor went through the comp plan, and then the comp plan, it does state not alone, not as, not only residential restaurants, but also city, you know, office space. And this would meet that requirement to be an office space. So, you know, then again, I get pulled to the other side, I swear, I have like. I swear, God, I have like, the hats are getting worn because I've been switching back and forth. They have, and the other question, the other thing I wanted to note too, though, if we didn't go into that space and came here, there's no guarantee that the owner of that new building, a lattice, will build commercial space in there. And they're building a new hope, their whole first floor is for amenities for their renters. So, there's no guarantee. And if they did put commercial space in there, there's no guarantee it's going to be full all the time. There's businesses come and go, and this is true all over the place. And especially now when it's hard to maintain a brick and mortar business. Some residents noted that we would have no room for expansion. I do have a question for Kelly. Since we got the twenty thousand on the first floor, does that mean that that second floor space will no longer be available for expansion if we need it?
That's my understanding, it would not be available.
Okay. And then, potential parking and noise issues, this is just my personal concern. I know they're going to open up that space inside the U and allow it, they're going to have certain lighting, special lighting to show the residents that that parking spot has to be available for City Hall meetings, for gatherings. But I do know that after some of these meetings, people gather outside and they speak quite loudly when they're upset. And what happens if we have a huge meeting and this room is packed down the hallway, which has happened in the past here, into the street, and there's noise? What is, you know, how are you going to control that so the renters aren't disturbed? And I've had input from people, emails, different things, that don't see the building as welcoming, whereas you have a standalone as welcoming. So, that's one of the things, the pros is it's first of its kind. We could be courageous and get into this building and it goes really well. In the short term, we save, what, about five million, and it's going to be an absolutely gorgeous building. So, I'm sorry if I'm talking, but I just need to talk so people understand where I'm coming from. If we go with the standalone, we will have to bond for a third of it. And there is a person in the city that has said that they will push for a referendum to put it on a vote for the city for the next election, just so everyone knows, which could put our brand new City Hall at complete jeopardy. If the city, if it went on a vote, that could knock it out for who knows how long. That worries me. And it's only for, what, an additional two or three million bond, but that there is there. I just want people to know. I've been calling and talking to folks today. The one strength with the new City Hall, we have complete control of the building. If we have a standalone, we have a little bit shorter TIF, I think would be more welcoming. And it'd be our first standalone City Hall in the city. So, I mean, I'm still thinking, but I just needed to get it out there that I have put a lot of thought into it. It's a big decision. It's one thing that we absolutely do need in this city because this thing was not well thought out. It wasn't cared for, and they were not thinking of us back when they put this all together. So, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Mersion?
I agree with Connie that it was a tough weekend from last week trying to figure out which way to go on this, but the way I see is that, you know, you're saving taxpayers to raise their taxes and stuff. Excuse me. And the other thing is that putting the City Hall right in the middle of Mill Street makes no sense to me because I know that if any other contractor would have came into Columbia Heights and tried that, they would have been turned down right away. So, my feelings is that'll save the taxpayers money, their taxes won't go up, and we got the extra money to upgrade other buildings. So, that's why I really like the idea of going, putting it up there on Central, just to save taxpayers. And the idea of where the new City Hall would be is just, just ain't right, right in the middle of a street that's been there for years. So, that's all I have.
Councilmember Navinski?
It's a pretty tough decision, like everyone else. I'm sure we've all been thinking and gathering info from multiple places. Thank you for staff for putting together that Wednesday meeting for the residents. Thank you to the residents for coming out and expressing their concerns and views. It helped get some answers out there for all of us, questions I didn't even know to think to ask. Money is a big part of it, but it's not like we're going out on the cheap, I would say. This new building is going to be one of the most energy efficient available, which will put our City Hall being energy efficient, something we don't have now, for sure. And staff has vetted pretty much everything, it seems like, and is happy with what could happen. I mean, there are unknowns, there's unknowns in anything we do. And to be the first, I mean, let's be the first and do it right, you know? There'll be some questions along the way, there'll be some bumps in the road, the parking may not go perfect, but it never does. So, we're all motivated to get a new City Hall because that is the one, for sure, thing is that this building does have to be replaced.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. I was against this to start with because of the way things were coming down, and it came down pretty quick. However, we got to go to New Hope and see what this contractor's developing over at New Hope. And I got to look at that, what they were doing, and what we're going to do with our new City Hall. I wanted to go in the Mersion Hall. I thought we had to do that, but now we have money left because, as a matter of fact, a developer told me personally, and we haven't seen the numbers yet, but it looks like we'll have, the City Hall may not cost us anything. That's what he told me. Out of twenty-five-year TIF district, we maybe will get our City Hall built for nothing. Now, if that's going to happen, which I think may, because I saw the building they built over at New Hope, and boy, did that change my mind. These guys are really great. They've done that in the last two years, and it started a couple of years ago. And it's right off the golf course up there in New Hope. If you want any doubts on this building, these developers, they changed my mind. What a building they built, and our building, they've built it already. And apartments, this is going to be an upscale, no one's mentioned that. When I first heard that, upscale, our city's never been an upscale city, but this will be, I think, when Hy-Vee hears about this, because there's going to be, how many rooms are going to be in this one? How many units?
Contemplated in between two fifty and two sixty.
How much?
Two fifty and two sixty-five.
So, you're talking five hundred people probably living here, more, on Fortyth and Central. Hy-Vee will probably immediately want to start building their new restaurant up there, a new grocery store. Because that's what we need. I think this will be a real, at first, I thought it'd be a boondoggle for Columbia Heights, but as I've really dug into it, I think this will be one of the best things that's ever happened to our city and the people living here. And the comments I've had are about ten to one. I don't think I've had, I had maybe one person that wanted to do our City Hall over on, with Mersion Hall. But I've had everyone else saying, "This is a great idea." And the people that live close to this development are telling me in emails and stuff that this is exactly what we want because it's going to build our values of our homes up. So, it is a lot of way to go yet, however, I'm for it, a hundred percent. Because I believe it's going to be one of the best things that's ever happened, and I've been in this council for all the nineteen years I've been here. And we're going to, when we're done, this is going to be a very big thing and a very positive thing for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron, could you clarify, it's not free for the city?
Yeah, so, not free. So, right now, it's estimated that it would cost us two point seven million, okay? The efficiency that we gain predominantly, and to allude to one of our resident questions about two million dollar credit that the city gets, is built into the project because TIF creates the space for the city to utilize, that same benefit that the developer's benefiting from, by building it into the overall development structure. They'll give us a two million dollar credit to build out our space. And from there, it's estimated that you could do a reasonable City Hall, but we want a budget for something considerably nicer, and we've increased that budget by one point five million to do the build out of our shell, so to speak, the twenty thousand square feet, and then an additional five hundred thousand for our furniture fixtures and equipment. It was always contemplated from the beginning that we would be responsible for our equipment, furniture fixtures and technology. So, we're just building a budget in our estimation that creates an institutional-grade building that we'll be proud to own for a very long time. The early estimates for our tenant improvements or building out our space, we're budgeted at a hundred dollars a square foot, and we've increased that to a hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot to drive at the quality component that we know is a concern. And with all of that, it still is considerably less expensive than the standalone option. The efficiencies that you gain by being part of a bigger project are significant.
All right. Then I'm going to put our city attorney to work. There was comment about a referendum. Could you tell us what would happen if there was a referendum?
In my opinion, they can't have a referendum on this type of matter. It's not provided for in the city charter.
I mean, a referendum for the standalone. If the standalone had went through and we needed to bond for the standalone, that's what the referendum would have been for.
That's a possibility for that.
Okay. But only if we did the standalone?
Right.
Right.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right.
Thank you. I also wanted to make some comments. We've, I did, Connie did bring up that we just completed our comp plan and with a lot of work from several citizens from our city and, like she said, one of the things is on that Fortyth and Central, they were looking for a mixed-use configuration with office and restaurants and housing. And this is going to fulfill that one, for sure. Then it also said that it was asking for underground parking for multi-use, and that's what this is providing for. Expanded green space with public gathering places. There is a little parklet right outside of the City Hall and restaurant space. So, it's not huge, but it is, it is another gathering space. And that, the other thing that they were requesting for principals for this guideline is that the building would have the front walls up at the sidewalk edge reflective of the existing development pattern on the west side. So, that is another goal that is being met. As for the economic development goals from the comp plan, they were looking to attract visitors and shoppers to Columbia Heights. Well, if you add two hundred and fifty units or more, you're going to definitely add more shoppers to this area, more people that are going to want to utilize the restaurants up and down Central, not just the one there in their building. It's also allowing for financial support for the expansion by allowing the TIF, by doubling the space to a comparable height, everything is, and adding that underground, we are being financially responsible in that respect. We're encouraging job growth by adding new restaurant space and potential management opportunities in the apartment complex. And it's also creating a unique and marketable identity for our city. Like, it has been mentioned, this is not happened before, and we will be the city that people will be looking to. And to have a mixed-use space right in the center of our city, it's not uncommon, if you go to little towns, to have a city center. And we are not parking it right in the middle of Central, like some cities will do, but we are putting it right there so that people know that this is the center of our city. And very common to see in smaller towns, City Hall right on their main drag. And this is one of our main drags. It's going to be an asset. We still have taxable property there, but we also have our own condo unit that, we are not leasing, we will own that unit. So, that makes it unique, too. They're adding, they're talking about adding EV hookups for residents and city alike. So, air conditioning, heating, top notch, up-to-date lighting. So, it's just going to be a big improvement for that corner and incentive for other businesses to come in and move into. I think it could be a very great asset to the city. So, moving on. If there are no other comments from the city? This is not a public forum at this point. So, we had public commentary in, it's our finance director would like to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'd just like to offer a point of clarification on one of the things you've been discussing here. While you would be correct that this would probably be unique in terms of the first time a City Hall had co-located in a, as a condominium in a private building, by no means is this concept of a public partner, public-private partnership, a new thing. That's been used extensively, and so, there's quite a bit of experience in terms of making agreements that work for both partners. From toll bridges to sports stadiums, here in Columbia Heights, you have a public-private partnership with regard to the Fairview parking ramp and the bar at Mersion Hall. So, I just wanted to clarify that while, yes, it would be a first for that type of public-partner-private partnership, public-private partnership, it wouldn't be the first 3P, as they call them.
I was aware of, there's been convention centers and transportation things that are public-private, big events. This would be, but for a City Hall itself was the one that we couldn't find.
Correct.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments from council members? All right. Aaron, did you have any last comments?
I have an answer question.
All right. If there are no further questions, can I have a motion, please?
Move to wait, no, I'm going to make sure I have the right one. Move to work with Lattice Development Corporation to establish a new City Hall on the first floor of a vertical mixed-use development at thirty-nine eighty-six Central Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Next item is city council administrative reports. Nick, did you want to start?
I did the coffee with the cop at Parkview before the meeting on Wednesday, which thanks again to the residents that came out to that and you had a chance to ask questions and express your opinions. Other than that, been pretty busy with just trying to gather info on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Mersion?
The library spaghetti dinner was a good success. A lot of people there, it was fun. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Williams?
Well, it's wonderful to see our old fire chief come back here and end his career here in Columbia Heights. And Kelly, thank you for getting him back here. And Dan, thank you for nominating him to come back and be our chief. I understand Dan O'Brien nominated him to come back.
Dan definitely gave him the nod of approval. We'll leave it at that.
It makes our city more of a family, I think, and thank you for that. That was very exciting for me to see that and hear that, Dan. So, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Biskins?
I attended another Metro Council, the last of the three, Metro Housing and Economic Committee. I attended the spaghetti dinner, the library fundraiser. It was well-attended and lots of fun. I stopped by at the, after that, I stopped by at the stories of our neighborhood, the tail end of it over in First Lutheran National Church, our First Lutheran Church on Fortyth. And that was also very interesting, one of, I think, not Mohammed.
Ibrahim.
Ibrahim also was one of the speakers at that from, we were talking, they were talking about our Somali neighbors. And I attended the open meeting training with council commissioners and staff, making sure that we understand the open meeting laws thoroughly. We had the city presentation for our new City Hall location options. And I intended, last Friday, I decided to attend the youth climate strike at Minnesota State Capitol, and it was a very moving experience. It's great to see a large number of people show up. We had six thousand, according to the news, show up at the Capitol, be amongst those crowds for people that are concerned about our planet and our weather, what's happening, and how we can be more sustainable and how we can change that. It was very inspiring to be there. And that was it.
Do you have totals for the Opraxio walk, by any chance?
Not exact totals.
But estimates.
Estimates, there was probably two hundred people that showed. Estimates, there was probably 200 people that showed up for the apraxia walk, and not quite as much was raised this year. It's about 13,600 that was raised for it, where it was about 23 last year, so. But it was well-attended, everybody had a good time, the kids felt like stars for the day, and thanks to the Lions and the Boosters for both sponsoring it and giving up their food truck for the day.
Good turnout. Kids were having fun.
Mm-hmm, and Captain America made an appearance, so that was good.
Thank you, Captain America. Saved the day again.
That's right, and there should be more superheroes next year, from what I'm understanding.
All right, good. I was able to attend League Minnesota Cities Board Retreat in Duluth, enjoyed it, even though it poured rain most of the time, but that's okay, I was at meetings all day. Got some information, was able to share it with our city manager, Kelly, maybe some ideas for training for upcoming events or for our council discussion, too, for annual meeting. Also attended our final meeting for the League of Minnesota Cities Policy Committee, had some really good discussions this year with the metro cities and with the League of Minnesota Cities. Lot of work. I don't know, Connie, how you did it last year, you were just constantly there, and it was exhausting just to keep up with just the two committees. Thank you for all of your work and participating in that. It's, it is a lot of work, but it's very important that we have a voice, and that's essential, that we have a voice at the state, too, not just sitting back and saying, oh, we should've said something, but no, we actually are saying something, and appreciate all the work that Connie's been doing, too, and myself. So it's making a difference. They know us by name when we go there. And then, Kelly, you wanna add anything?
Just a couple things, yes, please. First of all, thank you and congratulations. Mike O'Reilly in our Public Works Department, 42 years, he has served the city of Columbia Heights, and this Friday is his last day. He is retiring. We wish him all the best. He will be greatly, greatly missed by everyone in the city, not just the Public Works Department. The library has some interesting events going on this week. They have an author talk with Carolyn Porter, and that's at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, and then AARP is doing some tech training on iPhones, and that is on Friday, the 27th. There's a couple of different sessions. There's a basic session and then a beyond-the-basic session. It's probably best to either check the website, it's on their calendar on our website, or give them a call to see about which sessions might be, still have availability. That's all I have.
Okay. City attorney?
I don't have anything to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Next item is our community forum. At this time, individuals may address the city council about any item not included on the regular agenda. Speakers are requested to come to the podium, sign their name and address on the form for the city council secretary's record, and limit their comments to five minutes. Individuals are asked to state their name for the record. The city council will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if needed, request staff to follow up or direct the matter to be added to an upcoming agenda. Generally, the city council will not take official action on items raised at the community forum at the meeting in which they are raised, and Nicole, I think you have at least one.
Yes, Sean Broome.
Excuse me, I'll try to be fast. Privacy is the soul of it. Shameful.
Can you state names?
Hi, I'm Sean Broome. I live at 4117 Fifth Street Northeast. I'm a resident of Columbia Heights, and again, I'll just start out with shameful, because that's actually what this process was. It's embarrassing that you all voted for such an expenditure of city resources on a building that is supposed to reflect the desires and wishes of the residents of the city of Columbia Heights with barely a sneeze of community involvement. A single meeting less than a week ago that got less than a week's notice is actually preposterous to think that that is meaningful community engagement about something as important as our city hall. So you all have basically, in secret, shoveled money into the pockets of a developer. I'm not the kind of person who actually uses developer as a pejorative. I don't think it's a bad thing, but I'd just like to make sure it was said out loud for everybody, that it was made explicit and aware, that this developer, in addition to developing in an opportunity zone, which is a federal tax advantage that allows people, large financial investors, to invest money without paying capital gains taxes, this investor has come and asked for a TIF, which I actually think is meaningful. You guys probably should've voted for the TIF. It is going to be difficult to demolish this ramp, demolish the building, and build a new building without the TIF. And then, we're going to go give them money for city hall, be it through a continuation of the TIF, direct cash, or money for the advances being put into the space. You guys are shoveling money into a lattice's pockets. At the end of the year, if a bunch of developers get together and have drinks for whoever got the best deal, Bob Lux is getting drinks bought for him because he just got a great deal from the city of Columbia Heights. That doesn't matter, that 40th and Central is not a good place to put city hall. It's not a good place to put city hall for a variety of reasons. It's a Monday-to-Friday, nine-to-five use. It will be boring and stultifying on weekends and in evenings, when we would want the people who live in this building to come down and use the businesses we would hope would be on the first floor. Further, if 40th and Central is supposed to be our downtown, you should have things to do there. City hall is not a thing to do there, in addition to the fact that we're buying a facility in a building that we will not be able to control. We're giving up taxes in perpetuity. 20,000 square feet of some of the best commercial property in the city of Columbia Heights will never be taxed again for all intents and purposes. It is only in the most facile and short-sighted sense of the term that you would think we are either saving money or that this is a benefit for the city of Columbia Heights. That's in addition to forgetting about what is it we do with this site and the site at immersion hall, right? Because it's gonna be 10 years from now that we're gonna start complaining about how immersion hall has fallen down, and we're gonna look to replace it on the cheap again, instead of doing something meaningful with it in a city hall site here right now. This is embarrassing. And it gets to the point that there is a current site where city hall should've been, and y'all should've taken an opportunity to get questions and comments from the public before you voted on it, which just goes to show how shamefully disingenuous this entire process has been. Hueset Park is the most inclusive and welcoming site in the city of Columbia Heights. You can see it every afternoon out there, you can hear it every afternoon when the Golden Glovers are practicing downstairs, and we should build on that. And what are we gonna do? We're not gonna tear down this site and let it be a grass field in perpetuity, because there's no clear development plan for this either. Again, another source of forgone revenue, further establishing that this is cheaper only in the easiest sense of the term. Director Chirpich had made a point of commenting that this was completely built out. The city of Columbia Heights is completely built out, and it is, and that means that the opportunity to build 20,000 square feet of commercial space will not come again. There is no such thing as being built for free. You all just did something that shows how little you have given thought to this and how little you have engaged with the community on this. Embarrassing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Malcolm Watson.
Malcolm Watson, 1717 49th Avenue Northeast in Columbia Heights. Doesn't seem that long ago that, but it is 60 years ago that I built our first city hall and first police station and enlarged the two-stall garage that was our fire station. The years do go by, but I'd be interested in the financing that is projected for the various things, because back in the old days, I guess it was, we were so very careful about how we spent the public's money, and that, of course, is in your hands. You have to determine how the money of our taxpayers is best spent. I would've made different decision, probably, but whatever decisions have been made, we're going to live with. I don't know how much we will get for this structure. I think I shot, I thought an estimate of about $1,500,000, depending on what kind of a buyer we could find. I would hope that you'll be very careful about how you project spending our taxpayer money. I don't know what's gonna happen with that deck on the north side of the building on 40th and Central. That has been in poor condition, and I'm not sure from the sketch exactly how the property was going to be used. The bank area, obviously, is projected to be remodeled into city hall. Now, what else is included, I don't know. The parking ramp is, is under question whether or not that was gonna be removed. I heard it was going to be removed along with the seven-story building, but apparently some of those plans have changed. You can't second-guess what has already been done, but we can be very careful about how we look to the future. I know 60 years ago, I wouldn't have envisioned some of these things. I'd been a city manager for a couple of years at that time, and my first thought was to build a police station. It was very necessary, and our city offices were on the porch of the fieldhouse, and these were the essential needs of the city at that time. And since then, we've had a lot of elbow room to work with, because when I left the city in '77, we had several thousands of dollars in all of our funds, and we were out of debt except for some bonds remaining on the, on the public works building. We worked long hours, and we accomplished a great deal over those years after World War II, and I'm pleased with whatever was accomplished. I won't apologize for anything that we did, and we did a good job with whatever we had. So I'd like to have some fairly concrete figures on what the expenditures will be. I know on tax increment financing, that's an area that was developed, the central business district, after I left the city. I did some of the appraisal of properties at that time. I'd like to see more public input on this. Now, how it would be accomplished, I'm not certain. That's up to you people, but I'm there to answer questions. I still get calls from people. Oh, and incidentally, we're in our annual fundraiser for the youth of our community. It's our Qantas, we call it our peanut sale, so, any of you that, you've got yours. Bobby, I've left some at your place, but we're selling these boxes of peanuts, they're $50, and all the money we get goes to support the young people in our community. Appreciate the police chief and fire chief and their donations and yours, and my grandson, Aaron, is here with me, and I have cases of peanuts down on the automobile as well as the one here. Okay, well, if you have any questions, I'm used to questions.
Okay, I'm gonna direct you back to Director Chirpich, and he can answer some of those questions. I don't know if you picked up this sheet, too?
No, I was, I was looking at the picture of what was going to be done with that building.
You need to, you need to have...
I wonder where North was on the...
Set up a meeting with Aaron, and he will explain everything.
I'll turn to him before I leave, okay?
Not your son, Aaron, grandson, Aaron, but...
Malcolm, Malcolm, Malcolm. I wanna say this about the peanuts, they're really fresh. They are. You can taste them, they're different.
Oh, they're good, yeah.
They're new and they're fresh. You can taste it.
All right, anybody else?
Yes, Katie.
So stop down at the station, you can get some peanuts free.
I would make comment to...
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're all saved.
Thanks, Katie.
All right, there are, actually, nobody else unless Erin wants to get up and speak, too. All right.
There's too many Erins.
The other Erin's already spoke plenty, he's good.
You already have 200 that's been speaking, that's enough.
All right, that's, so, can I get a motion to adjourn, then, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Merson, second by Councilmember Navinsky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned.
See ya.